Hi Julie.
It's to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God. The Constitution, and justice for all.
So this is going to be no school board work session today. We're going to skip over athletic update until they get here. So we'll go ahead and do the approval of the minutes for October 12. I'm just looking for a motion on that.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for October 12, 2021.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Hi. You guys are going to do it that way or?
Well, I think we like to do it both ways. They're so public if they're watching the video.
I'm just waiting on Kelly's.
Yeah, that would be me. Who is trying to give it to Wordox?
You're not on yet.
Jen's talking to give you a minute or?
Is there anybody here for public comment tonight?
Kelly, I'll go ahead and vote for it.
Okay. I put in some information about my new sort of appearance just about the secure campus incident that occurred a week and a half ago now. We meet, Dave Hobbs is not here tonight, but we meet regularly with police and fire from across the communities to talk about situations like this. And I think I was here that day. Staff did a great job schoolwide of responding. Building was locked down, children aren't allowed, and no one is allowed in or out of the buildings in that circumstance. But we do our best to not share any information that isn't needed. People like to really just keep the focus on learning, and that is how that played out. I know there's always feedback that information is broadcast out quickly enough. We do our best to get that out, but our first priority is to take care of the internal. So once we know that's been addressed, then we focus on getting it cleared out. And I appreciate the support of administration and staff here and handling things as well and making the best of the possible situation.
I think this is the fact of just, I think you guys did a great job because I feel like the communication went out very quickly. Like you said, like a lot of times there's issues. And I think even people I've seen on Facebook and stuff too about people being very pleased with the communication between the building and the parents. And then I also personally appreciate the fact that you didn't overshare with the kids because I know for my, you know, there's, I have children that would be affected by that, you know, by not knowing what's going on or feeling like something's going on but not, you know, not being 100%. So I feel like it was just the right amount of information to keep them safe without overwhelming. So I appreciate that.
I agree. On that note too, I just want to give a shout out to Erin Bryan as well because I was able to see that you guys did make time for staff in the afternoon to give them a chance to be in front. So I thought that was really important and I was really happy to see that. I think that was, I think that really made a difference with some of the staff, at least the ones that I was able to connect with. And kudos for doing that. That was looking beyond the situation and looking over your stuff. I appreciate that.
Just briefly, Winnetka had an orientation for the class 2026. So starting that transition process, developing process, and budget development and the budget process, we ramped it up quickly across all of our districts and we'll start here just before Thanksgiving.
Any questions on this superintendent report?
Can I ask that question?
For the lockdown, how many times do you guys do drills like a year or month? I know, you know, fire drills are every so often, but how about for a lockdown drill?
Yeah, so lockdowns are required, I think, at this point annually.
Long time.
And this, this was not a lockdown officially. It does a difference between a secure campus and a lockdown. A lockdown is typically an emergency for the building. So this won't count as that drill, but certainly we work with police and fire. Each fire chief, really, local emergency officials, they're filling the drill schedule in conjunction with administrators and sign off that we've sort of met those requirements. And so that has evolved a little bit. It requires 10 drills a year. It used to be 10 fire drills and then they have, with the discretion of local emergency providers, allow that to include the lockdown, to be substituted, some other drills like reverse evacuation, for example. Most of the people are outside of this community. But we do practice them and staff are well trained in, you know, our procedure for lockdown situation. And staff do review all of those expectations as students at the beginning of the year at a classroom level.
Thank you. Yes, he is here. We'll do the athletic update now.
Hello.
Hi.
How's everybody doing? Is it okay if I take my mask off for this or is it okay to keep it on too?
Whatever, I'll be a part of it.
Okay, alright. It's way easier to just talk about it. Alright, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jordi Hartlidge. I'm the PE teacher and the athletic director here. I just want to give you a little bit of an update on fall sports. So if you want to look at the front paper, just a few things. So all five sports thankfully were up and running. On the back of your little packet, I had the coaches do a little write-up on each sport that they did just to see how everything went. I think you'll see that it definitely was more of a rebuilding process this year, which is great. I think that with COVID, it also kind of just brought back a lot of kids from that developmental stage where they didn't work on skills for so long. So the coaches are really trying hard to work on those skills that they could have developed, you know, a few years ago. So it was definitely a great process for them. Our coaches were super patient. They all stepped up to the plate. I had a really tough time trying to get some coaches to step up and lead. But thankfully after, I think people seeing me just beg for coaches, they, they really helped out. So I just want to give them a big shout out because it's not easy, especially during this year, especially at the very beginning of the year. I think fall sports is the most challenging to coach right away because you're also focusing with teaching and a lot of our coaches are staff members, so they have a lot of other stuff going on. But they were amazing. Thankfully, we had no COVID issues, so that was a blessing in disguise. We also, I personally never had to cancel any games. So that was just something that I had as a goal for me. I would always try everything I can to allow the game to play. Obviously, safety was my number one issue, but thankfully we never had to worry about that. So anything that was postponed or canceled or whatever, it was just unfortunately due to the other schools that were playing. But overall, successful season. I think one of the biggest things that I had was, it was the first home volleyball game and I was setting up, getting everything ready. And I put down all the chairs and I told my wife, I was like, probably one of the best moments I've had this year was I got to see three eighth graders who clearly haven't done any sport or anything. They just sat down on the chairs and they took a selfie together. And like, it's going to get me to tear up because that's what we've been missing for the last two years. And to see them just so excited over something small, you know, it was huge for them. So it just, it meant a lot to me and I'm just happy that we were able to have fall sports and especially indoor sport like volleyball. So, but yeah, you can read the coaches outline on the back in your spare time. I won't waste your time reading through all those things. But some of the things that we definitely struggled with, and I can see this carrying over into the winter season, was the fact that a lot of schools are having tough times fielding teams. That happened during the fall. A lot of our sports teams had to lose games because of the other towns not having enough players. Sadly, it's mainly the girls' teams that for whatever reason, the participation has been really low just throughout the whole entire city of New Hampshire. It's even going up to the high school level, just the participation is really low. So unfortunately, they had to get some games canceled, but overall, I mean, they still got a season in. So I look at that as a plus. Another thing is the busing challenges. Every single school is having issues with busing. Games are starting later, which is the main reason for that. They just don't have anybody to be able to do the buses. A lot of buses are doing double runs. I know for us, that's the main reason why they'll do double drop-off. So we have to kind of wait for the buses. But again, everybody's in the same boat, so we're all just working together to be able to have a season and just kind of roll with the punches. And then the other thing was just officiating. I don't see it being an issue with basketball thankfully or wrestling, but definitely the officiating was really low. Not many refs. I don't know why there's such a shortage in a profession that pays really well for not very much of their time. But this year for fall sports, we definitely struggled trying to find officials. But like I said, basketball, we should be all set. Does anybody have any questions on fall sports?
I used to write for, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. No, it's fine. Alright, so winter sports. We're obviously on winter sports right now. We have been doing boys' basketball this week for tryouts. We've had tryouts the last two days and we have one more tomorrow. So far, so good. It's been going really well. I've been really impressed with how hard the kids are working, which is excellent because I think the biggest thing as a phys ed teacher I see is their endurance is really, really low right now. A lot of these kids have not been, you know, outside for a while. They haven't played organized sports, so they haven't gotten as much endurance or cardio. So it's been really awesome to see them pushing themselves. And that's what we've been doing as kind of just as the AD and then our coach who's here for the A-team, just motivating them. And it's really, it's awesome to see because I was a little nervous to see how kind of it would start off, but the kids are embracing the challenge and that's what we're telling them, don't give up. That's, that's the message. So overall, for boys' basketball, it's going really well. We have about 31 kids that have signed up. That's pretty good. I know I've heard that in the past, basketball is a pretty big sport here. So it's nice that we have enough for two teams. And the same is said for the girls' basketball. We have tryouts next Monday and Tuesday. The only reason why we don't is our coach is just not here this week. So we're just kind of spreading everything out, especially with this many kids. We don't want that many bodies in one area. It just could get kind of crazy, so we're splitting it up a little bit. But 28 kids have signed up, which again is a solid number. So we have two teams. I'm just happy that we can fill two teams so that we can get them to participate. Nobody wants to make cuts, but unfortunately for boys' basketball, we might have to do that depending on how many kids show up tomorrow. But in general, it's been a really positive process so far. And then with wrestling, I have a Zoom meeting on Sunday to kind of go over the schedule with the other people in the wrestling world. I am not educated on wrestling whatsoever, so I'm looking really forward to this meeting to kind of figure it out, to know what the schedule is going to look like. And obviously, in the world that we're living in right now, it would be interesting to kind of see any of their protocols or requirements, excuse me, for that. But I think the biggest thing that I have to bring up today is the mask update. This has been something that came into fall sports a little bit. I know that one of the teams, Hampton Academy, they had a rule, everyone has to wear a mask whether they're home or away games. And I really did not want the girls to miss out on playing a volleyball game this fall. So I switched one of the home games to an away game so that they could have two games. Now, they didn't get a home game against Hampton Academy, but they were still able to play and ultimately that's our number one goal. I can see that kind of translating over into winter sports. I know that I did talk with Hampton Academy AD today. He did say that the only way that he would be able to bring his team to Seabrook is if our players, spectators and coaches and officials wore masks. I will say that's the general gist. We have a Google Doc that talks about the requirements and protocols for each sport. And it's been pretty much all players, coaches, officials and spectators have to wear masks when visiting their school. Not everyone has filled that list out yet, but I do see that being the main protocol for most schools within our conference. I only know of one school that has firmly said that they are not requiring masks to be worn. So I know that Northampton and Rye has canceled all home and away games with us this year for, for winter sports. They just canceled them right away. I think the biggest issue is that we don't have a mask mandate. So they, even with us going to their school and saying, we will adhere to your protocols, we will follow along. Erin and I have had conversations about that with fall sports. So we will listen to what your school is asking for us to do. Of course, parents have every right to say, no, we don't want you playing in that game. We don't want you playing with a mask on. We said that is fine for fall sports. I feel the same exact way for winter sports. But it is a bummer that they unfortunately have already canceled, you know, with us because that's two games for boys and girls. So that's four games total that unfortunately we have to take off the list already. So that's kind of where we're at with winter sports. We're going to be meeting in December to have kind of another conversation about this, but we are always talking to one another. We're always in constant conversation. I talk with main group every single day almost. So, and it's constantly changing and that's what a lot of them have said. So I've emailed them again asking, is there anyone who would have issues coming to Seabrook if we did not have a mask mandate? And only one school, like I said, Hampton Academy, reached back out and said that. So it looks like as of right now, no other school that we're playing is going to have issues if they come and we don't have masks on at Seabrook. So I guess, I don't know, I'm looking for recommendations from all of you. I'm completely open to whatever the board feels comfortable with. I just think that it's definitely a matter that has caused some, some issues within the AD world for, for us this year in sports, just because we are, I believe, the only school within our conference that doesn't have a mask mandate or requiring students to wear masks.
So they're not willing to play us even if we follow their rules?
Northampton and Rye are not. Hampton Academy said that they will only play us at Seabrook if we wear masks. Every other school has not gotten in touch with me to let me know if that's an issue. So I'm going to take it that it's fine. And if their school is asking for us to wear masks when we go and play at their facilities, like we did with volleyball this fall, we, we follow their rules just because that's what their protocols are asking for us to do. It's not ideal. I've played basketball and other sports in a mask and it's, it's not fun. It's not easy. It's really not. So I go back and forth with, with how I feel on this matter because I just want to make the decision that is going to allow kids to play and be active, right? That's all we want. So I guess it's kind of where we're at.
I mean, you got to follow their rules. It's not, if they want to play, we have to follow their rules. And that's just the way it is. But we don't have any control over what Rye does, but do we have any control as a superintendent on Northampton? I think that's a bit ridiculous. If they're willing to follow the rules, that they're not going to play in.
Well, they're bored.
They've probably, they've probably had more cases than Seabrook for all I know.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So there are students that are probably very soon want to be, probably vaccinated. Is there any take on that? I mean, personally, my child will be, but are they saying that it's only temporarily? Or if you don't know that, and the other thing is, is that a child playing basketball with a mask on who has asthma is more dangerous than a child not wearing a mask?
I agree.
So what if we, I'm not referring to the, the schools that have refused to play us.
Yeah.
But would they normally, so I don't know a lot, I know basketball. I don't know a lot about volleyball and stuff, but wouldn't they, if they were going to play us, be considered in like the playoffs and championships? Because if they refuse to play us, then they should be forfeiting the games, not, they should forfeit and lose and lose. They should not be decided to be eliminated from playing us. They should, they should have to be forfeiting, meaning that they are passing up that game if someone's at their school.
I agree. Especially if we're willing to be flexible. We don't do playoffs or anything though, so it doesn't, it really only would impact our kids being able to play a game. There's no, there's no playoffs.
There's no playoffs or championship right now in school?
No, there's no playoffs or championship. I mean, that's a great point though. I mean, I agree with that. If we did have a championship or if we did have a playoff system, I would definitely probably bring that to the table because it's like you said, they are giving up the opportunity.
Because I did, I go myself.
No, I mean, that's a great, that's a great point. It's a really good point.
But as far as the masks, I don't, I mean, I never, I wouldn't have a problem wearing a mask as a spectator and I wouldn't as a coach, but as, I mean, I'm just really having a hot time with them. Going to their school is one thing because these are the choices they make. But as far as coming to our school, for them to say, you know, even though you don't have a mandate, you need to wear a mask, that to me is unacceptable. Like I feel like whether it's the school board or the superintendent or somebody needs to say, you know, you can't make the rules in our school. We, we can follow our rules.
Right. Which is why I said that to Hampton Academy because I did not want to give up the opportunity for the kids to be able to play. So instead of make, obviously not making that decision, I just said, okay, we'll, we'll go to your school to play. Oh yeah, no, I'm not, yeah, I don't want to take it that way whatsoever. No, I think it's a really good point.
But at the same time, it's like, I feel like that the people that are not you making these decisions, they're holding this over the kids' head. Like we're going to have, you've got to wear a mask, but we're going to take, like same with field trips or anything else. You know, you've got to wear a mask, but you're not going to go, you know, there's no mask mandates in libraries and wherever.
Right.
You know?
Right.
So, but thank you.
Yeah, of course.
You know?
Oh yeah, no, no problem. I love this. This is awesome.
Two questions. One, have you talked to a lot of the kids on the teams maybe from fall sports as far as getting their opinions on? Do they feel like they're okay with that? Do you feel a lot of pushback?
With the masks?
Yeah, as far as doing it when it feels necessary to go to these other schools that are requiring it.
Yeah, so the only school or the only sport for fall sports that was indoors was volleyball. Every other sport was outdoors. So you, if you want to wear a mask outdoors, that was just optional for, if you felt like you wanted to wear one. But yeah, that was the only sport that we had that issue with for fall.
Did you feel any pushback from our, our kids on the team that felt like it was?
No, I honestly feel like, I mean, they were bummed when we had to cancel games because, you know, Rye unfortunately dropped out towards the end of the season and that unfortunately took two games away. So giving the kids more time to play, that's what they want. They don't care, I don't think that they would care about the masks. Now volleyball is a lot different than basketball. I mean, you're, you know, you're moving laterally, you know, forward and back, but in basketball, I mean, you're doing a lot more. So I think that the sports compared to the masks, you can't really compare. But I didn't, I didn't feel any pushback from the girls and nothing with the coaches either. So, yeah.
And I don't know if this is possible, but would it be something where we could potentially test and do rapid tests before a game, you know, day? And I don't know if every parent would be okay with that, but as far as if it gets the kids playing, especially in schools where they're like, no, you're not, they're not doing it. Is that an option to do a rapid test before the game?
They say right now the limiting factor is availability of rapid tests. So there's been a, we were provided with some of one by the state and they have told us that they're no longer available. So our supply is not going to last the test thirty kids that want.
Gotcha, okay.
So did you say they all wore masks during volleyball?
No, only, only at the schools that they asked them to wear masks for.
And there was no cases?
There was no cases. No, so we didn't have any cases whatsoever. Our jobs as the ADs is to let the AD for that school know, hey, just so you know, we just found out that we had a COVID case on the girls' soccer team. So then I would let the parents and I would let the school know about that. But we didn't have any for any sports teams and for us. So, I mean, it helped that they were outdoors. So I think that that was a huge thing. But obviously with flu season coming around, getting cold, a lot of these, you know, sicknesses might get, might think that it's something different when it's really just a normal cold. So I, I just, I don't want to punish kids for telling them that they have to either stay home or they can't come to practice because they have a cold and they just don't know it or not. So it's a lot to obviously manage, but I mean, we're making it through. So that's all that matters. So thank you, yeah. It's been fun. It really has been. It's just been really frustrating because I want the kids to be able to play. I want them to have that time because it's been so long since they've had a full season. So I'm just happy that we haven't had, knock on wood, anything that was going to stop that, so.
I mean, obviously if we want to play, we have to follow their rules. I get that, but I'm just really baffled by Rye and Northampton and I'm not sure what we can do about, I can't do anything about Rye, but how do we even try to fix that with Northampton? They're within our district, like we're going to follow the rules and you still don't want to play. That's like, so do masks work or they don't work? Like what, I don't, I don't get it.
Yeah, yeah, we've definitely kept, we've kept the dates open. Again, they, they keep saying that things are changing and they are. So they could easily come back and just say, hey, let's just keep those games on the schedule. So I know the dates that, you know, were canceled and we'll see as the year goes on. But I think that that's a good plan to start off with and just adapt to what we're being asked to do.
Can we find out who actually would like to move that, that rule for Northampton? To find out how we can possibly, even if we, you know, write them a letter and just say, hey, we're willing to.
Would that be a board and board discussion? Would that be something their board?
I'm not resident, so I can't just go to a board and be like, hey.
Well, no, I meant like our board to their board, a discussion of boards, I guess.
And I want to, I want to obviously be sentimental towards everybody's decision because I know that the AD world right now is really, really tough. I mean, any administration part right now is really tough. So nobody likes making decisions to cancel games. You know, nobody in, in our group does. I think that they're trying to make the decision that is, you know, they're being told to do or what the community is kind of going towards. So I think that it's just tough decisions for everyone to make.
I feel like somebody's lacking some numbers because I believe in Cartman's run, Northampton's had more cases than students that have masks.
And I'm pretty sure that the, this is a relevant, but they have more vaccinated students than we do.
Although, I guess, trying to find out, I guess, who's, who's, you know, made that.
My question would be, sorry, I need to put it up there. Is that if Northampton and Rye cancel the games, obviously that's, those games are out of their schedule as well, so their kids are impacted by that.
Correct.
So my question would be, how are they working on getting those additional games? Because I'm wondering if there's any other towns that we can, we can like, kind of like expand out to?
Yeah, yeah.
Other than, because I'm going to be really honest, I think Northampton, I think it's going to be a fundamental issue. I don't think it's going to be a conversation. I feel like where they are is going to be a fundamental difference from where we are. It's not, never not worth trying, but I think it would be beneficial for us to have a second option and if there are additional towns or if we can add another game from one of the towns that they're already playing or however that's happening.
That's what I'm looking into currently. I know I got an email from Portsmouth Christian Academy, their AD over there. They mentioned that they're the, one of the schools that got back to me how they strongly are against forcing students to wear masks playing basketball. So they, he mentioned.
Smart organization.
He mentioned having a game or two. So I'm also going to see if we can add those games. And I know that I've talked with Mrs. Milver about other schools, so just trying to get as many games as we can.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Yes, we're honored to hear you say that you're doing a great job.
The will is way.
Exactly. That's how I look at it. I'm not going to give up until physically someone said, no other option.
Well, we appreciate that.
No, thank you.
And I know the kids appreciate that.
Yes, just like we want them to play and they want to play.
And they're doing great. They're doing the best they can. So, yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you for letting me do one.
Yeah, no, thank you. You all are wonderful. Yeah, of course. Come to the games.
I'm here to do it.
Yeah, I'm in the middle of creating a sports website. So hopefully that will be up soon, so it's easy for the whole community to be able to kind of look and see who's playing or not. So, awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You too.
Next up, we have a quick little introduction of the superintendent's report.
So Dr. Hobson has to go home today. Wasn't feeling well, but his report is attached. He just talked a little bit about the work of professional development day, the essay-wide work on curriculum and the continuing work on portrait of a learner. And hopes to align that with the developmental aspects pretty much potentially. So the pilot team is exploring that possibility and I'm going to introduce him to the floor.
Student services report.
Thank you. Well, it's hard to follow sports, but I'll do my best. So I'll just highlight a few things here and I'll also note that there's a, a second document from Jessica Parsons, so the director from Seabrook, with some Seabrook-based information. But as far as essay-wide, we're offering, or actually requiring our counselors to attend. requiring our counselors to attend 504 trainings, um, held by our attorney from Wissom, uh, so that's a three webinar series held at the high school, so everybody's coming together to view that, um, there's um, also a couple of things in there as far as, um, what our, um, all of our staff had to complete during the professional development day on November 4th, um, and then finally, some information there about our COVID testing and potential vaccines, so as you know, we've been doing the screening every other week, and I included totals for September and October, it's more than doubled from September to October at Seabrook, so we're happy to see that more, um, parents are allowing their students to, or their children to participate in the screening, um, and I think as was said, we do have some, um, rapid tests at the state campus, but unfortunately, those, those supplies ran out really quickly, um, so I doubt there are even any left at Seabrook at this point, but we were able to, to get them some, so if a, a student came down, some was at school, then us just were able to test them there, um, and then, um, um, you may have seen the, the survey that came out, we're, um, looking into providing vaccine, vaccine clinics for students ages five to 11 in schools, based on, um, interest level, uh, at all of our districts, we're waiting to hear when the state would order those and provide those, um, and then we would hold a clinic somewhere centrally, it could be just at Winnicott, or it could be in Hampton and Seabrook, um, and it's the Pfizer vaccine, so there would be, you know, one clinic and then one three weeks later for kids, um, certainly it would be a time when, um, parents would bring in their stu, their child, so, um, you know, when children are younger, parents are more interested in being there with the child, if, you know, there's gonna be a vaccination, so it would probably be, um, you know, a late afternoon or a Saturday morning timelines, but at this point, we're still waiting to hear when we would have access to that, and those would be administered by Hampton E M Ts, and potentially Hampton Falls, potentially Seabrook, uh, E M Ts.
Do we have any plans to get more testing, is there, I know that the state said that they're not like supplying, I just didn't know if there was.
As far as the screening or the rapid tests?
The rapids. Um, I check that website all the time, so they did say we're, we're, you know, they kind of indicated they would be looking at replenishing that, I don't have super high hopes about it, because I think everybody, everybody wants that rapid test in the schools, um, I'm checking it all the time, um, once they're there, I'm gonna order a whole bunch and go pick them up, but I, I'm not too optimistic about it.
I just didn't know, but I'm like, an alternative, let's say they continue to not.
Well, one, one alternative is to increase the frequency of screening, so we do that every other week, we could offer that weekly instead, um, that doesn't, that doesn't solve the problem of kids who come down with symptoms during school, um, but it can help to catch some of those, um, positives before they come symptomatic, so that is one, one thing that we could do, we can increase the frequency of the screening as we get more into the winter months, so, but we'll keep checking, the, and the only other rapid tests available that I've seen are, are at cost, and they're pretty costly, um, so we're not ready to, to go down that road, I think.
So I have to ask a question, because it's bugging me, why are we addressing vaccinations, why is this not something students are being done with their parents at their pediatricians, so they can get the medical information that they need from their pediatricians, I mean, I know it's not something they have to do, I guess I'm just struggling with that we have so many issues due to COVID emotionally with the kids that need to be caught up on, that I don't understand why this energy is being put towards vaccinations when the parents, to me feel, I feel like that should stop at home, like the vaccination should be an issue that is addressed at home, the COVID testing, yeah, you know, I mean, the schools obviously, if parents can't get the appointments, it's very, you know, it's, it's available to the parents, but the vaccinations, I almost feel like that, I don't know, I just, I don't understand.
I totally hear you, um, we, so that's why they, um, the state, or actually our region, Seacoast Public Health Network, put out the survey, and part of that survey asked about the location, where would you like to receive the, you know, of those people who are interested in vaccines for ages five to 11, they said, okay, where would you like to receive that, and over half of the respondents said wherever it's first available.
Okay.
Wherever, so we're including that number, and then some, then another additional percentage indicated they want, they would like it at school, so like, we had it for kids age 12 and up, first it was 16, 17, and 12 and up last spring, there, there are people who would like to have it here as well, so, you know, if the results of that survey were, you know, minimal, like, everybody wants to go to the doctor, we wouldn't even be trying to, you know what I'm saying, like, we wouldn't even be trying, we would just follow the data, we would follow the responses from parents, and, um, however, we have a good number, we have a good number of that, so we're just gonna follow what people say that they're interested in and take it from there, and, and of course, it's completely optional, voluntary, and, and outside of school, so.
So looking at the option. Yeah, so looking at the flip side of that, then if that's a need and a requirement for a lot of people and they are choosing that school's probably in the best location, and maybe it's because parents work and, or whatever, that's great, but that also means that on the flip side of it, if we have a good outcome of vaccinations, then the mask mandates for the other people within the districts, which obviously we can't vote on, should loosen up, hopefully that will encourage them to kinda let them be like, okay, well now we have this many kids within this district who have decided with the parents to be vaccinated, hopefully it'll work on the other way.
So, so yes, and I heard Dr. Chan.
I know, but I'm hoping.
It's kind of a maybe, I wish it were that simple.
It needs to be.
Because what we know is that, you know, part of the reason for vaccinations is to minimize the risk of being hospitalized, you, as we all have seen, you can still get COVID while there are those breakthrough cases, but it, you know, you might only have symptoms for two days instead of going into the hospital, you know.
My grandfather got vaccinated, he got it and his symptoms were pretty bad, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I don't.
So sir, I think that, you know, once that the vaccine, that's the way out of this, is to increase the vaccination for all ages, and then little by little, things can be, can be rolled back, but I don't think we're anywhere near that, unfortunately.
Right, any, um, anymore on your report?
That was, that's my report.
Any more questions? Thank you. Well, move on to, um, Seabrook Elementary.
Well, I'm excited to share some of the fun happening at Seabrook Elementary School, um, our third and fourth graders took their first field trip in a while, they actually walked to the library, they got their library card, and we worked really closely with the Seabrook Library to make that happen, and it's a cool read of passage that we made sure our fourth graders caught up to.
Ah, that's awesome, that is awesome.
Got a library card, we'll be working with the town librarian to do a book exchange, so she'll be coming doing, you know, read alouds in the classroom again, and we'll be doing, students can check out from Seabrook Library and go back and forth, um, there were a handful of fun outdoor activities that we did, our unified arts team organized National Outdoor Day, um, all our students spent the day out in the woods, going for, so playing in the sticks and just having a blast, and there's pictures there, um, and our fourth grade team organized a community day where all the fourth graders made cool T-shirts, they did tie dye, and they had a blast outside playing outdoor, um, there's some information there about our P D, I don't know if it was mentioned in the previous report, our report cards are going on Power School again this year, so we've been sending out reminders, they are digital all through Power School, so all those parents that are out there listening, please make sure you get your Power School count up.
It was very easy to do, I can say, it's very easy to set up.
We're, we're still chasing probably about half families, so the more we can get online, the better, um, Lauren DeConcent here, shout out to Lauren, Brooklyn coordinator for helping me with the pictures, but also for, um, her work with the follow assessments and coordinating the remote support, and one more thing, I'll get two more things, um, our new art teacher here, finally, Ms. DeBerg is here, and we're excited to have her, if you walk down the hallway, there's this beautiful mural, all the students' hands have changed colors, um, so when you walk back up to the elementary school, it's really cool, and I'll let you put it in, and the last one, um, the Veterans Day activities are exciting, you can see the front of our building, Stacy Small has already collected over $800 for penny meters, we're putting together packages for veterans, and so a lot of good stuff there. Do my highlights.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks, Brian. Seabrook Elementary.
All right, thank you, I'll be brief, since athletics was a lengthy discussion, and I'm a school too, um, just a couple of highlights, I just wanted to really thank our E As who have been working incredibly hard and, um, are often asked to do other things, or jump into a classroom and help out, and they've been amazing and do so really without hesitation, they're great team players, so they're appreciated, um, a couple of things going on for us, we, P D day, we talked a little bit about, we did do, uh, work on, um, the zones of regulation and kind of de-escalating behaviors in the morning, so we had building level P D in the morning and then jumped into the S A U level P D in the afternoon, that went really well, um, we had a RAM assembly last week in RAM, which is our responsive advisory, um, meeting that we have every day in smaller groups, working with staff, we're working on respectful, accountable, and motivated, and those are the three key things that kids are learning about and can earn tickets for showing, for demonstrating those things, so we had an assembly and we, um, gave awards to kids who had been chosen by their grade level teams as students who had earned tickets and done a really good job representing those three, um, traits, so that was really fun, the kids really enjoyed that, we did just a great little amount of time to keep the numbers down, um, but that was a really positive experience, and then also last week was Red Ribbon Week, which the, our youth to youth groups put together and have different themes every day, so it's a spirit week and lots of messages, um, through RAM about being drug-free and, and being healthy, just about, well, and you can see, I, I gave you some pictures, including some spirited staff members who really get into it too, so, the fun week. Do you have any questions, Sarah?
Um, I have a question about the zones of regulation, and I've heard some things about it, about some issues with, you know, like, behavior, and then they, is, is the steps that when a behavior person, they go to the zones of regulation, is there like a separate room?
So there, yeah, there's a couple of different, the zones of regulation has a program that helps kids identify which, where they're at, which zone they're in, whether they're in the blue, the green, the yellow, or the red zone, um, and so we're gonna be, and the elementary school has used it for years, but we're gonna be kind of teaching our kids to just work on their own regulations, so that they can recognize, that the purposes, they can recognize before they get to the red, that they're having a hard time, come out and go to what we call the zones room, which is the place that they can go and take a break, regulate, and then get back to the class, or staff from that room go into the classroom and, and work with them in the classroom to avoid them having to come out, um, purpose being oftentimes, you know, I don't know if you've ever been in the middle school, but they don't want to be in the classroom and they want to avoid work, they figure out pretty quickly how they can do that, so this program is to, um, we're working to avoid that, so that the same kids aren't constantly coming out of the class because they want to avoid work, and then they get out of work and they go to the next block.
That was a question I had.
Yeah, absolutely, that's how.
It felt like they were coming back.
So it's not meant to be just a place where teachers say, oh, Johnny's being disruptive, you need to go and, you know, head to your next class, and they're like, sweet, bye. This is not, this is staff working with kids to help them be successful in the class and stay in the class and be able to do their work.
Do you feel like you've had success that you can see, like measurable maybe, just personally, do you feel like you've seen a difference in behavior issues, or do you feel like there are things that need to be done, um, with behavior specifically, if you have certain kids, like you said, that continue to come out, are there ways that we're working with them to not have that happen, or have them subsequently disrupt a whole classroom continuously over and over?
Right.
Are there things, have you noticed a difference?
Yes, I think we're seeing, as a whole, the whole feeling of the building settling down, it, you know, it felt very, a little bit chaotic with kids, I think I talked about this the last month, um, just the, the change in classes and moving in the hallways more, in cafeteria, there was just something we hadn't had in a long time, so, um, yes, I think, um, we have seen that the, going to the zones room and that staff have been very successful in helping some kids figure out some strategies and, and learn some strategies and be more successful, we certainly have some students that they're working with, uh, behavior plans with, because the behaviors are not just little things, it's, it's a bigger issue, um, so, yes, I would say so far we're seeing some success, it's still early, it's only, sometimes I say, oh my gosh, it's November, but then again, it's only November, um, so we're, we're definitely, that, that addition of just Emma Fallon on our B C B A has been huge, and the staff that helped and support her, um, has really been helpful to teachers, and we're also figuring out what's, you go to the principal or assistant principal, and what's you go to zone, so it's as a staff, we spent some time really working on a flow chart of if this, then that, so that the teachers have, felt like they knew, okay, it's just a little disruption, or, you know, it's something bigger and needs administrator's attention, and, and, because zones isn't necessarily about dishing out a consequence, that's administration, so we've worked through some of that, um, and that's been helpful, and I think teachers, the feedback I'm getting is teachers feel more, um, like they know what to expect, a little less confused about what we're doing, because we did change kind of our approach to behaviors, for sure, and just making the time and finding the time to make sure everyone's on the same page, and they feel like they have enough training to, to know what to do, and I think we got there last week especially, so that was really positive, and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, which is.
That's good. Do you guys, I know last year we, we had, you know, some staff that didn't feel like supported, and just with all the madness that was going on, do you feel that here, that we're kind of getting there, they're feeling a little more relaxed, and they have the tools that they need to, to be successful now?
I mean, I would say it's, it's a ongoing process, we're really struggling with vacancies, we had 14 staff out, I think, yesterday, and five subs, that makes it really challenging for everybody, people are stepping up to provide internal coverage, but that, long-term, is green, right, like, there's no downtime for people, and I think definitely seeing the effects of that, I think, Ms. Erin DeSar, we think last week's meeting was a, an affirmation for people that they are supported, I can tell you, the school, a fair amount, um, in the last few weeks, that, that everybody is working really hard, um, but again, the lack of additional support, additional people, to step in and fill some of those holes, is, is exhausting, and everybody is gonna reach a point, right, at, at different times, where there, there's, it's not enough, um, but I, I do think people feel like everyone's in this together, that it's a team, that there's a team working together to address those who need them, um, and take care of kids.
And I think we found a little ways, just giving teachers a little bit of extra time, that wasn't, you know, we had something planned and we switched gears to give them time to work in their teams, that went a long way, um, I would say, just a shout out to the S A U staff who have, you know, they've been in the buildings, coming down, how can we help, knowing that we are short-staffed and we are all juggling things has been huge, and, and isn't always something that they, you know, nobody has extra time, right, so that's, that's been nice, but I do think as a whole, the staff feels like we're a team and, and working together, so I feel pretty positive about that.
Do you feel like the staff being out is a sick day situation, or it's just mental health days for their own benefit, I'm, not that I'm knocking, but just in general, do you feel like it's a lot of like, where they have to test and do those things?
I think it's a, I think it's a variety, I think it's a mix, you know, I think, yeah, there's lots of stuff going on for people, and I think that the biggest impact is, is that we don't have subs, we really just don't have subs everywhere. Sure, sure.
Can I ask a question to Brian, did, are the, um, is the elementary school still sitting in the classrooms eating lunch, do we look at, do we know what the future is about putting them back in the cafeteria to give maybe the teachers more time to themselves, and the students' time, more time to kind of get out of the classroom atmosphere, and?
Yeah, absolutely, so our, our school has put together a scheduling committee, so we can adjust our schedule, the core schedule that, um, that I'm, I'm working under right now, um, did not take that into consideration, so right now our after-school boarding is affected, our gym is affected, so I have to change the entire schedule in order to make the cafeteria available, so that it can be cleaned in time for those other activities, and so if it were up to me, we'd probably be there, but now I need to work with my staff so that we can make the adjustments, when I change, for example, lunch by five minutes, it may affect reading services, speech services, for the whole day, so we're meeting on Monday, and that's our primary goal, is to make sure we can free the, because we also have to get rid of them gym inside, and the current schedule won't allow for gym inside.
Okay, we've been bringing it up a lot, so it's kind of disappointing that, but, I mean, obviously, you've just stepped in, so.
The schedules are number one priority right now.
Right, yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, awesome, Matt? Awesome. Matt, on to the good stuff.
Thank you. So yes, we are in the middle of the budget development process, and we do plan to present a proposed offering budget and warrant articles to the board on November 23rd. And those, those documents will be sent over approximately a week prior to that meeting, so next Tuesday or Wednesday. There, there is a second budget meeting scheduled for the 30th, should we need extra time. And then there is, and then once the board has an approved budget and warrant articles, it'll be presented to the budget committee, and that's scheduled for December 13th. I encourage you, when we do send over the budget materials, it's really beneficial for the, for you as the board members, if you, if you can review those very interesting documents that I send over. Just to, to get an idea of what's being proposed, what, you know, what initiatives we're bringing forth, how, how we're budgeting for the school year. So that, those documents will include a spreadsheet, account by account. Then there'll be individual pages, worksheets for every single account narrative that describes exactly what we're looking to budget and the rationale behind that. There will be a PowerPoint that, that summarizes all those, all those accounts and the general, overall, general budget, you know, initiatives, as well as some supplemental documents that includes like pay raise history, salary schedules, revenue, estimated revenues, grant funds, et cetera. So I know you're very much looking forward to seeing the budget and reviewing those, and we, we will hopefully get through it. Our intent is to get through it pretty quickly. How we typically do it is on the 23rd, we'll, we'll go through the PowerPoint and then, or the last couple of years, that's the way we've done it, is go through the PowerPoint. And then if you have any questions about specific accounts, we can jump to the narrative page. Because there's a lot of page worksheets where it's, it's like benefits and just, you know, status quo accounts that aren't changing. So that, that really gets to the meat of the, of the budget, particularly if you do have the ability to review beforehand. Of course, we can certainly do it a different way. If you want to go page by page, we can absolutely do that as well. But we, we found that that's pretty, pretty efficient and we hit the most important items. So there are two account, I mean, I'm sorry, two reports included in board docs, the revenue expenditure reports year-to-date. There are really no significant, you know, changes from last month. I will note however, that on the revenue side, we weren't notified by the Department of Education Office of Nutrition that we will be receiving some unanticipated revenue. They have set aside funds that they're distributing to school districts who were interrupted due to the pandemic. So, you know, if, if there was a decline in revenues or if there was any sort of interruption, they, they're providing some funds. Now, it's just under $700, so it's not, it's not. I guess, sorry for saying that to you with this, not a, not a large amount, but I, I mean, it is nice to see some revenue that was not anticipated coming our way. So every, every dollar counts.
Absolutely.
So however, I, you know, I would be happy to answer any questions if you have specific items on either the expenditure or revenue reports that we have to address.
Yeah, I think it is important that when, you know, you get that information that you look at it afterwards so that you can answer questions as well. All right, any questions? Facilities?
Yep, Peter included his report, just talking about the maintenance work that's been completed over the last month. But I will just note, they continue to be challenged by staffing levels. They're also working incredibly hard and putting in extra time to do their best to keep the schools clean and in shape for kids and staff. So I appreciate their efforts as well.
Can I tell a story about Peter? This is good.
Is it a good story?
It's a good story. No, it's a compliment.
Yeah, she can compliment it.
So it's not just because it happened to me. So a couple of weeks ago, probably two weeks ago, my son left his football jersey here and it was a catastrophe. You know, we have a game, like it's the end of the world, the gym is being cleaned, somebody's gonna take my football jersey. So I'm like, oh, great. So I had Peter on Facebook, so I sent him a private message and I'm like, hey, can you do me a huge favor tomorrow morning? Can you just check the gym and see if you see Connor's jersey? He didn't just check, he came here that night within 15 minutes because a guy cleaning, he was either busy or couldn't get in touch with him, whatever. So he just sent back, he's like Connor's jersey is in my office. When he comes in tomorrow, just have him come to facilities. And I'm like, oh, did the guy find it? He's like, no. He goes, I ran there. He got his jersey. I think he would have done that for anybody, you know what I mean? So it's just like that extra stuff. So I just have to say that. He made somebody who was going to bed with like the end of the world and not with a smile. And he's not gonna win the game because he's not gonna go to wear his jersey, as someone would say. And I said, you need to tell Peter, you need to look at Peter in the face and you need to say thank you because he really won't budge me off you Connor. And that was really nice of him. He goes, okay.
That's really nice.
Thank you.
He's a good guy.
He's a very good guy.
He's, he's fixed a lot of SAS parents who had flat tires in the parking lot.
Yeah, I heard that.
His forest doesn't know how to change your flat tire. You know?
We all have our skills.
Yeah, that's not one of them.
So we don't sell cars with spare tires anymore.
See, I don't even need to learn how to do it now. We're good together, right?
Probably don't even check until you go to, need one, and then the car's just in the yard.
So I think tonight, we're hearing a lot about, you know, staffing issues. We need, you know, more staffs. So if there's anybody out there that is looking for a job that would love to work here, please reach out to SAU 21 and look at the job listings online. We can't run this place without bodies.
A lot of people ask for mother's schedules. Subbing would be a great mother's schedule. So a lot of, there's a lot of people asking about things that are like, while their kids are in school, this is the perfect job. Literally exactly when their kids are in school, so.
Where are we with on the secretary position for the facilities director?
So an individual was hired and began and has resigned.
Oh, I'm not interested.
Do we, that's a good question then. Do we have another candidate that was part of that original?
I don't know the answer to that. I was just informed today.
There you go.
We will, we will look at it for them, not hiring, obviously.
Have you been given information as to why? Not that you can share them, but I'm just saying, have they, or they just resigned?
I don't have that information.
Literally just told you.
They're depressed.
Okay.
They found out today.
Gotcha.
Continuing business, elementary school administration.
Yes. So I spent time after our last meeting, met with the faculty here, invited in, I met with administrators across both buildings. And based on all of that, my recommendation will be that Brian serve as the interim principal until June 30th of '22. Recommend that we advertise the permanent principal position this December so that we can start that process early and we will take the permanent principal, hopefully by, by February. For the balance of this school year, Brian and Jessica Parsons, our student services director, will share the responsibilities for supervision and evaluation of staff. We have posted internally for a sub-coordinator for both the elementary and middle school. I will say, given the challenges that we face, because there's a small subsupply and a lot of holes to plug internally, it really isn't that simple. The sub-coordinator typically would call people and see if they're available and field calls from staff who are out. Unfortunately, because there's so much juggling right now, that still requires a lot of work from our administrators, like an hour a day, probably at least on average. So, but it may help take off some of the load. And then our, our plan is also pending board approval to advertise for assistant principal for the remainder of this year, focused primarily on behavior management support. So that's, that's what we're recommending.
You need a vote for it?
I will ultimately need a vote for the nomination, but if, you know, I guess I'm just looking to see if this makes sense to the board.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. We were running the nomination for Brian to, to be the principal until June, was it your day?
I'll second that. Okay, let me move that because I had that later pinned D. So Christina made the motion?
No, Kelly did.
Kelly, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Who made the, who seconded that?
Just.
Jessica Brown?
Yeah.
The vote is open.
All those in favor? All right.
So I do have a question then about, so you say you're gonna advertise it in December for, at least for the principal position. If Brian would like to.
Affirm.
Transition, yeah, be the permanent one, how, how does that work in terms of if he's the interim, if he chooses?
So, so it would be an open hiring process. The intended, we would post for it, interview people who apply, to include Brian if he applies, and the committee would, you know, choose candidates to, finalists to recommend to me, and then I would come to the board pending what happens with the hiring process.
Please turn to school update.
No real update for this yet?
SaaS waiting list.
That looks like it's my turn. All right. So I did include in the email earlier this week, updated numbers. My apologies for not being the last orbiting to hit this then, but I'm here now. This is a, I have additional copies over here if you want to hand them out. I might not just share.
This is the same.
Same thing. If you guys are all kind, you don't need a copy, you're good to go. As you can tell, I did in the SAS colors too. My life is SAS. It's kind of like where things go. But I wanted you guys to have a lot of the information. So on that second handout that I provided, it does at the bottom give you guys current numbers for SAS as well. I think our goal with, with the school board and with the super school district is to be as transparent as possible. We want you guys to have the numbers. We want you to know what we're looking at. You know, there are some things in here that definitely mirror what you guys are dealing with, you know, during the school day as well. We do see an increase in behaviors. We see kids are struggling in, in different areas that, that we did not even really think of before. And some of those things that we were prepared for are not the hot button issues right now. So I think our, our main goal that we have with these, with our students is really just to form strong relationships. And that really has been the first month and a half of our program. Before I get into the numbers that I'm proposing for tonight, I just want to let you know that we are rolling out our academic support component. We've always had the brain zone, but the big part of this year moving forward to the grant that we had received in July is that we have additional time down for students that need extra academic support. So from six to seven PM, we actually will be able to take 48 students during that time and do more one-on-one, one-on-one small group work with them. Those are very targeted. Those are very specific to students' needs. Those can include social, emotional learning and academics. I definitely, if you, if you want more information about what we've proposed in the grant, I'm more than happy to send it your way. If you don't already have a copy of it, so you can kind of get an idea of what it is that, that I'm talking about in terms of scope and services. We, like I said, we're rolling out our academic components and our brain zones and our extended brain zone. And starting next week, we should have all of our first grade level team meetings that our site coordinators do monthly, all set. Our first one will be down, and basically with the goal of those meetings is not to waste educators' time, and say that with a smile on my face, because I'm that person that does not like to go to a meeting just to have a meeting. I definitely, I, we talked about this before Christina, but these meetings are really important. They can be anywhere from 15 minutes to an hour, depending on what the schedule is, if they meet after school, if they meet during the school day. But it's to get a grasp on the students that are in SAS that the school day shares as well. So are there behavior issues? Are they falling behind in their work? Are they telling us that they're getting their homework done? But when we take a look in Power School, we're seeing that they're just hitting send in and nothing's attached to it. So those are why those, those types of meetings are important. Our middle school has already finished their, their meetings. They had their UA meeting today, and Brittany, our site coordinator in the middle school, has had nothing but positive things to say. Those interactions that they're getting, that's all about aligning the school day with after school and really giving these, these students and these families those additional supports that we bring into it. Not taking any, any more of your time, I wanted to at least give you a little, a little buffer right there, but what I'm proposing on here are three different dates. Now, right now, if you take a look at the current numbers in the second page, our waitlist is at 34. Now, our waitlist has maintained around that and we've still been able to keep taking kids. And what that's telling us is that our numbers and our interest and the need for this program is growing. We're at 34 right now. My proposal here would take care of at least all of the students and then some on our waiting list to get into programs. I cannot tell you how many emails that each of our site coordinators have gotten on a daily basis about wanting to get their kids off the waiting list and into a program. Obviously, there's seen something, a need that's being addressed. That's, that's incredible. And I really am proposing this so that the board can hopefully make a decision to get these kids into programs. We are seeing an increase in behaviors. We're seeing an increase in a need for these, these after-school programs that focus on academics and social, emotional learning. We now have one in this school, in the elementary and the middle, and I'm pushing us to fully absorb that in terms of getting any kid that is on that waiting list to get into these programs. So the numbers I'm looking at here have given three different dates, so we have some flexibility with, with what the options are. It's as soon as November 15th, which would be next week. There's a two-week break through the second proposal, which is November 29th. That's actually my, if I had to say would be my top pick of what I would choose on here, it would be November 29th. The reason for that is it starts our holiday session, so there's not gonna be this weird kind of gap with a student. We're a rolling enrollment anyway, so we're used to having kids as a rolling basis, but for a student to start on November 29th, right after the Thanksgiving Day holiday, I think that would be ideal. But I also do have a third date pushed back to December 13th, which at least would allow them to get into programs about a week, week and a half before they go on a holiday break. If you look on each of the columns on the right-hand side, all the way at the bottom of each one of those colored sections, those are all broken down between 10 youth off the waiting list, 20 youth off the waiting list, 30 youth off the waiting list, and 40 youth off the waiting list. I really think it's important when we have these discussions to have a lot of options and to be able to highlight those choices. So it's not just, here's what I'm asking you for, this is what 's on the table, yes or no. I think as a board, we need to be able to look at those and to make a decision with what makes the most sense, both for our students and, and financially and budget-wise. The final, the final one is the total with all 40. I'm gonna be honest with you, like I said, I'm really pushing for the green. A parent, I'm sure they're gonna push for the purple, the November 15th, absolutely. If the board, you know, decides that that's what you prefer to do, we're, we're ready to get the staff in. I have four to six staff that I know right now I can get in there to do these programs. But I cannot get them into a program with, and I'm gonna be very honest, with the fear that by the time we get to May or even April, we've exhausted our budget because we've overstaffed ourselves. Case in point why we're coming to the board, to get these kids off the waiting list. So open it up for questions.
So this is for the grant that we've already been approved?
Yes.
So what happens when we bring in more staff and then next year, the grant doesn't approve?
Grant's approved for five years.
Okay, so we're good for five years?
We're good for five years.
And then what happens? We have to reapply?
We reapply. So I'm glad you asked that question, Kelly, because in the middle school, we've actually had, this is now our third round of grant funding. So we originally wrote the five-year grant 2011, got the grant for the middle school, reworked it again, and then we were able to add in the elementary.
But just to clarify, like the grants cover.
But just, just to clarify, like the grants covers the existing program. Anything here would be, would be on the school district to supplement on an annual basis. So, so we would have to, it would have to be budgeted, the operating budget for, for this additional piece, in addition to the seventy thousand dollars that we have already budgeted for. So just, so it's not, so that, so that, that grant, the point of the century doesn't.
That's off the waiting list and then anything, if we approve the waiting list, it's, it's put into the budget.
You certainly could approve the waiting list this year and then, you know.
That's actually my recommendation. And the reason for that is because we don't know what the ebb and flow is going to be for students throughout the years. We could have, to be very honest, maybe there's other after-school competition in a year or two and we noticed that our numbers still beat the goal but go down with where they are right now. I would, I'd like to look at that every single year to take a peek at that and to be able to show you guys those numbers of where we are so we can make those decisions moving forward. That would be my recommendation.
Well, but you'll have clarity in those numbers essentially the year of, not, not when we're budgeted. So, because we're budgeting now for next year, so essentially, so next year you'll have a better idea. We'll have to somehow, we'll have to find funds somewhere within the existing operating.
So you're recommending looking at putting this potentially in the budget that we're working on for next year?
Well, I'm not, I'm not recommending anything.
Or you're just saying that's what time was?
I'm just clarifying the funding piece. If, if it's something that you want to continue with, then it'd be advised that you would budget for it.
So we talked about, I know last, last meeting we talked about the fact that, um, Matt, you had said that you thought there would be an addition, there would be additional space that would need to be utilized and then subsequently cleaning of those spaces and stuff like that. Uh, but far as you're saying, you don't feel that there is any additional space needed inside the school?
I'm really, I really, excuse me, really glad you brought that up. Um, because Matt and I have discussed, um, and after I was able to review the last meeting. Um, I should have put that in there with the proposal, I'll be very honest. I didn't think to put it in there because that would never be something that I would propose, to be very, very clear. Um, there are no residual outside expenses, hitting little words or anything like that that are in this proposal here. We already have seven rooms that are dedicated to SaaS and the after-school and the elementary. We also utilized every after-school and not after-school outdoor space that we have on a daily basis. That is going to carry over in the winter. So we don't need any additional space. There is no additional cleaning that will be put on, um, the facilities. I was able to speak with Peter about this as well. Um, we actually do a lot of our home cleaning when we're in SaaS. Um, we think it's important to show kids that when you make a mess, we need to clean our mess. That's an important thing right there, but it's also important to make sure these rooms are safe and that they're actually clean and not just tidy. Again, I want to point out that we utilize outdoor areas so much. Um, on any given day, you will see us outside on the courtyard, you'll see us outside in the grassy field, you'll see us outside in the field and there's some sports teams. So we definitely are giving our students an opportunity to be able to be together socially, but be outside and be in a safe place to be able to do those things. But there are no residual expenses by adding more kids off the waiting list.
So what are we talking about as far as where the money is coming from? Because I know you had suggested S R three, is that a possibility, seeing that?
It is a possibility. I would just add one thing that I did not mention in my report and that, um, Caroline and I had spoken about, but I don't think it was included at the time the report was submitted. Um, due to student need, we are advertising for an additional special educator at the middle school, um, for the current school year. So, and we have to stay taking those funds from a combination of S R and I D E A, um, to grant fund that position. And, um, so I don't know if that impact has been calculated yet this year.
I just completely thought of something like, it has nothing to do with social education, so.
Yeah, from, from an S R perspective, um, I would be reluctant to go that route, um, due to the, due to what we've, we've allocated, um, you know, for the plan. Um, so I, if, if this was something that I would proceed, I would recommend that we go, um, utilize funds from the operating budget. Now, obviously, yeah, budget for, for this additional expense. So we'd have to look at accounts where, um, where we may recognize a savings. Um, currently, we do have some savings, um, in like some salary accounts, um, that we could draw from, but, um, you know, we, I'm, we, we could, we would, we would be able to find the funds somewhere.
I mean, okay, it's true.
It's still early, I'm sorry, I'm reluctant to say anything.
Oh, yeah.
The account, it's still early in the year and things change, right?
Yeah, I, I feel like the.
I was kind of hoping it could come from the S R funds myself because the town, you know, the, the taxpayers already, it's already tight. Um, and we already fund like the rec center who also does, you know, programs with the kids. And asking the, the taxpayers to fund two programs, like when we have funds readily available, it just seems like a no brainer why put the burden on the taxpayers.
Could it potentially be, I mean, because we talked about at the end of last school year, we talked about money being returned because we had a surplus. Now, I know that that obviously was affected by COVID and not everybody being in school and there being a lot of different things that were affected. But if, is it normal that there is some sort of a surplus that then is returned? And we talked, because we talked about potentially keeping that as a fund, you know, like a just in case. And I know you had talked about how there's very specific ways that that money can be used. But if it's used before it gets to that point, is there as much red tape?
That's essentially what we're doing.
Okay.
We'd be utilizing operating budget, so we'd be returning less funds to them. We wouldn't plan on that on an ongoing basis.
Right, yeah.
Uh, but for this current year, that would be the case.
Okay.
And, and it's certainly, if, if you'd like to utilize, if you prefer, is something, if this is, you'd like to go forward with it, if you prefer to utilize S R funds, um, that is, that is, that is possible. So we just, there is some variability with, because the, the S R funds are three years, it's a three-year, um, period. And some of what the funds that we've allocated are for like, for salaries for some of these positions that there is some volatility, variability with those, with those salaries because we, we don't necessarily know who we're going to hire or there could be turnover and someone comes in at a higher rate. So we, we do have a little bit of, you know, we, we left a little room to allow for that. But alternatively, we, we could certainly utilize it for the, for the S R.
So besides the wiggle room, basically the S R funds are allocated to everything, is that where you're, so almost all is?
Right, it, it was the S R plan that we presented to you.
Okay.
And that's with the addition of the, um, the case manager.
Okay, the new one that you were just talking about.
Right.
So the stack, but there's no other, it wasn't like we had, let's say, eighty thousand dollars that we were still working on figuring out what to do with? You just left a certain amount for the variability of.
Right, because I mean, there's some projects and we have H V C projects that we haven't issued an R F P for yet. So we may, we've spoken to contractors, we have estimates, but costs have been going up. There's been cost escalation, so that, those bids could come in higher than we expected. So it's just, it was just prudent to leave some space there so that, to account to those, that variability.
If we were to use.
That being said, if you decide that this is a high priority, if those costs come in higher, we may just, we may just have to potentially not do one of those items. So it's, it's, it's just a, it's an exercise in prioritization, right? Or we utilize operating budget for that project.
I would just note that before we can obligate any additional funds from S R, we have to get state approval. That, that is generally a quick process, but it has been a little bit more delayed this year than usual. So the November twenty-ninth date would be a better start date from that perspective than November twenty.
Absolutely, and, and I do want to point out, you know, when, when would you get to that point of making the decision too? This is not something where a check needs to be cut for SaaS right now either. And, you know, and like I said, I, when I was painting that picture of when I get to like April or May, that's really it right there. So if we made the decision and it wasn't even available until March, that's fine. That, that actually, because we already have an operating budget that can cover that right now. I just want to make sure that in the large scheme of things, that money would be there so that it gets added into that operating budget so we can do the entire year, which is what we're doing.
But hypothetically, it does seem like it, maybe it makes more sense to use the operating budget at this point if we choose to move forward only for the sake of, we're not saying we can't do other things that maybe S R, we're going, was going to cover. If we just commit to it, then it's happening, if we commit to SaaS, we say it's happening regardless. If we say it's coming out of the operating budget, then we don't have to potentially say, well, if it comes out of S R now and then H VAC goes up or whatever goes up, then we're saying, well, basically we don't do that.
Right.
Versus if we just commit now and say, yes, it's coming out of the operating budget, then we're potentially avoiding the, you know, what-if issues. So you're saying that if we use S R funds now for SaaS, then any variability in H VAC or other projects that they were going to use S R for could either we say we can't do that now because we don't have the funds for it or we would potentially be pulling it out of the operating budget anyway? So if we just commit to SaaS from the operating budget, then any variability in anything that was committed to, from S R, will happen regardless. So we don't have to say, oh no, we can't do H VAC now because we don't have, you know, the extra operating budget. Because it's already been, the variability has already been accounted for in S R.
So when you said that we're going, we're hiring, um, special education teachers, is that a new position that wasn't?
Correct, it wasn't budgeted, it's driven by student need.
I have a problem with all these new positions through the, this grant, like, how are we going to afford this when this grant on its own? I, I just don't.
Special education, whether it's grant funded or not, if we have that need to.
Okay, so.
With student needs, we will still have to find a way to fund it. Um, we were looking to not impact the operating budget in this fiscal year. But again, it could be built into the operating budget.
So I think that's what's hard about taking money out of our, our operating budget is.
Well, I mean, we.
That type of stuff that we.
So I, so that brings me to something that just went off in my mind and it's a, it, it, it's kind of off subject, but it's not because it's a position. The zone rooms, where did those two positions come from?
The V C B A position.
Yeah, but where, where they posted and who agree, who approved them and?
The board approved the S R plan and the hiring.
The two zone positions, the two part zone.
They're part of the S R grant, the V C B A position and the paraprofessional positions that were in the S R grant were approved by the board in July or August. I don't think that those.
But they weren't posted.
They were.
People that currently walked into school were concerned because they was, they stated they were not posted.
And I've been through that with the associations and with administration.
I'm just, I'm, there was staff that questioned it because they questioned it and we're never got a clear answer, so that's why I asked because kind of the position came up when they were employees, so I had to ask.
Yeah, okay. So ultimately, can we just maybe make a, have a recommendation as far as you're saying it's, it would be better if we choose to move forward with SaaS, taking the extra money and providing the opportunity for kids to come in on the twenty-ninth? It would be better maybe overall to use it from the operating budget versus S R? So that we're not taking anything away from necessarily anything else?
Well, I think, I think the board should make, make a decision where the, the funding source is coming from.
Okay.
Um, either S R or the operating budget.
And we will manage either.
Yeah, and we, we will make, we can make either work. So we, we just want you to have all the information, so.
I am going to shake myself out of the vote. I'm sure that goes without saying, um, just because, well, I don't need to explain. We're in the emblem right here, so, um.
I'm going to make a motion that we, um, we admitted, admitted, admitted the date of November twenty-ninth, um, for ten youth off the waiting list, um, to be taken from the S R grants. I think that's a start. And then as we move forward, we can maybe revisit to see what funds look like, especially after the budget process.
Just real quick before you vote on it, does it become initial, if we say ten, we start with ten? And then potentially you want to add the extra, maybe the most is forty, does it change things?
This is independent from the budget process because we're, we're looking at this fiscal year. So it's, it's, as opposed to like when, when we meet on the twenty-fifth, we're looking at next year. So it's, it's kind of two separates.
But I think, but it still is going to reflect like the extra money that we give back to the town or what we have or what we need for next year. I just think that seeing the whole picture might.
And to review that on a monthly basis is what you're suggesting, to see what additional funds may be available a month from now?
I just want to, I really just want to kind of, not, it's not the word I want to use, but really emphasize how many students we have that have been on a rolling basis on this waiting list. And I don't know if I did a great job of articulating the fact that that number thirty-four was upwards of at fifty-two and it went down and then it went back up and it's going to continue to do that because of the need. I, I definitely totally respect your, your, um, the, the vote, right, the, um, the motion. Thank you very much. I haven't even gotten that word out. But I do want to say we're coming off from a COVID year with these kids. We are seeing that their behaviors are increased, we're seeing that the need is there. And I am bringing to the table thirty-four kids that are just waiting to get into a program. I think if there's anything that we voted on to make a difference in these kids, these students that need places to be safe after school, I think this would be the priority. I definitely respect when we talk about ten, I'm going to tell you, it's going to be even more challenging for me to get staff to get in there when we start pinching those numbers because, well, I don't have to explain it, we're all dealing with, with staff turnover and, and all of that this year. I'm really going to strongly recommend that we would get all of these kids off that waiting list for the parents that need these programs. I think we've demonstrated that in literally just a month and a half that there is a need for SaaS in the school.
And if we commit to only ten, how do you decide?
Exactly, I'm going to tell you, it's going to be a little bit of a nightmare on.
I don't know, I was just looking at the options and trying to.
I know, you're, you're.
Yeah, no, that's not.
I never should have put that ten.
Anyway, my vote's on the table, we can shut, or if somebody else has another vote, then.
Can you, can you repeat that motion?
Um, I just made a motion that we, um, that we would, would, um, admitted the date of, um, November twenty-ninth to take ten kids off the waiting list and use S R grant funds for the nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Can we potentially make a motion?
We need to do this vote first and then you can make whatever motion that we want. You can't, like, I already have a motion on the table, so we'll do this process and then you can definitely make a new motion if you want. Does that, does that make sense?
I just, I just, I'm just wondering, in the process of making a motion review, if we need to identify where the money is specifically coming from?
I just did a S R.
No, I know, I'm saying, do we have to do that now versus saying, proving and then? Okay.
Okay, for a second.
So I don't, I, I guess what I'm struggling with is that I feel like we're put on the spot to make this decision when we have another whole position being created that we have no say in.
Well, special education is a legal obligation on behalf of the.
Yeah, no, I know that.
Um, we had a meeting the end of last week, um, where we reviewed current information and then we, um, and the recommendation from our student services director and from Dr. Eric Kelly and was that we look to fill that position. So I don't feel like we have a choice in that position and that we have to need an education plan for these four students. Um, I, I, I hear the point. I think it was my intent to mention that earlier in tonight's meeting and I apologize for that mistake. But, but I, I wasn't seeking board approval for implementing that position because it's a legal obligation that we have.
Well, I didn't really mean approval, I meant that why is administration not looking at maybe this situation for the children is?
Because we don't have a legal obligation to provide services to the after-school for children.
Trying to understand it.
Yep, and, and, and that's, that's the reason. We have a legal obligation to provide, um, the education for the special education needs, the after-school fees is, is nice. And we're, we've committed seventy thousand dollars in our operating budget to that. And we're, we've committed $7,000 in our operating budget to that. And we added additional funds through the grant process, but they're not the same legal obligation for the children.
I made a motion sitting on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
A few people voting for the...
Online voting is open.
Oh, sorry. I'm on the wrong page. Oh, uh, no, yes. You're staying?
Oh, my God, this is so hard.
I vote, I vote no. I'm just reading on Kelly's phone.
What's that?
I'm going to say no right now because I have an option.
You're saying no? Motion failed, three to one.
Okay, so potentially now, this is just a procedural question. Can we make a motion to approve whatever it is and not specifically identify where the money? Okay, so the money has to be identified as whether it's coming from SRR or coming from the operating budget. I would like to make a motion to, to approve getting the 40 off the waiting list as of November 29th. So, the second option. And I think coming out of the operating budget for this year specifically and then to revisit what that looks like in subsequent years. This year? This, this year specifically coming out of the operating budget using funds from accounts that we're going to be getting savings in certain areas, potentially. What if we don't? What if we don't? Exactly. What does that, what does happen in a situation where?
Well, hypothetically, if we run a deficit, then we would have to have a special meeting to ask the town for additional funds. I'm confident that we'll be able to cover the cost.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Online voting is open for that. Make sure you read that motion and make sure that that's accurate. You're staying up for me.
Yeah. And that would be, and then that would mean that we would be revisiting this? For next year, yeah, for next year, just for next year. Which potentially could be the 23rd of November, yes? If we decide that...
Twenty-second.
Sorry, twenty-second. But that would be the time to discuss it for the following year? It would be that?
And, and to put this out there, guys, a big part of my job is to look at that, say that number that we just voted on, right? And to find other areas to find funding to take. Did you hear what I'm saying? That's, that's my job right there is to make, take a look at where we are. You guys are coming in, that's amazing. I need to figure out a way to get that now without partners, other things like that. So, I just want to really highlight kind of what's going on in my head now and the next step that we will be moving forward.
So, this would be the max number, yes?
Yes.
Well, no.
No.
Because this is as of November 29th. So, shh, hypothetically, next year we'd be starting September through the entire year. I also imagine...
Max for this year?
This year, yes. I have full confidence that Forrest will be able to supplement the cost.
I have full confidence.
Tell answer to me from your vote.
I know, so because I'm, the reason I'm struggling is because I'd rather see it come from the SRR. No, no, it's okay, no. I'd rather see it come from the SRR funds than the...
Revolve the budget.
The budget.
So, you can vote no and if the motion fails, you can propose that.
And we have the funds to cover that, correct?
Yes, currently.
Yes.
Currently, yes.
But that could change.
I, I am confident that we will continue to have the funds. It is not, it's never a definite, we could have, right, I mean, we could have...
Because I just feel like those funds should go to maybe supplement the system to help the kids we, you know, to get where they need to be because of COVID. And that's what the funds were for, correct? Were to, because of, due to COVID.
Yeah, the purpose, that that's one of the purposes.
And I feel, right, so I feel like that maybe more of the funds need to go directly to the children. So, yeah, I'll make my motion.
Motion passed, three, one, one.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. I will keep you updated with me getting these kids off the waiting list by that day. All right, your question?
I just want to share one story. There was one student who was just allowed out of the program. I wanted to wait till after. He came running in the door. He must have just had one spot. I get too obsessed today. Running right in the building, so I wanted to wait till after.
All right, so I don't have anything for us. We will go to our discussion.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just call me if you want to ask a question. You may not answer.
Here now, so the next meeting, like the last one, and ask you on there.
Perfect. Have a good night.
Bye.
We received a resignation from Southern Great States Studies teacher Courtney Spark effective immediately.
I'll accept that with the...
Do you mean her?
Yes, I'll share her letter. We did the certificate yesterday.
I can say this.
Sorry. All those in favor?
I don't have a second on that. Christina?
All you guys voting, we're just going to read over the next minute dates. I mean, meeting dates. Seabrook School Board Budget Review Monday, November 22nd at 4:30. Seabrook School Board Budget Review Tuesday, November 30th at 4:30 if needed. Joint Board Policy Committee Meeting Wednesday, December 8th at 5:00 p.m. Seabrook School Board Regular Meeting Tuesday, December 14th at 4:30.
I brought a hard copy, so I'll share it. Do we run it? Yeah, it's written on public.
So, make a motion to go into non-public under hour 691.
Page 32, it'll be item 1.
Item 1. I'll second. All those in favor?
Hi. Do a roll call for that officially.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
And Christina Kaiser?
Yes.
Board is in non-public at 6:12 p.m.